...the United States of America and consider the advocate for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
According to the reading of January 6th, 2015, the order, call please.
Goddard.
Here.
Latt.
Here.
Wyatt.
Here.
Olson.
Here.
Mathelah.
Here.
Gambino.
Here.
Barry.
Here.
And we'd like to approve the minutes.
I'd like to have the motion that we approve the minutes for the meeting on December 2nd, 2014, as written.
I'll second that motion.
Me, and seconded, call please.
Goddard.
Yes.
Latt.
Yes.
Wyatt.
Yes.
Olson.
Yes.
Mathelah.
Here.
Gambino.
Here.
Barry.
abstained.
He couldn't, he wasn't here.
That's not the point, he's supposed to have read them.
Well, with that counsel.
No, it's all right, we're all doing it, we're all doing it.
That's all the video.
Has state or absence?
Yeah.
Okay, we'd like to thank the outgoing counselors, and we have some plaques here. I'm gonna bring them around separately. We're gonna move, so you don't get these plaques. Barbara.
Yes.
And we have the City of Depot Bay, and like possession of this plaque, for your many years of service, and all dedication and everything you've done for us. Thank you.
Thank you.
That's free.
That's free.
Good ring, Goddard, thank you as well for your years and all your service, and all the things that you've done for this city, and I know we all appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you.
I'd like to, our next presentation, I'd like to present to Mrs. Hoyt-Tank, and if you'd like, I'd come over there, or would you like to come up there, I'd like to add some pictures, please.
No.
And service and trust humbly to Stephen Skip Hoyt-Tank, for his years of service, all his community service, and everything that he's done for us, I'd like to present this plaque to you, and as may have.
I'd like to thank the staff and employees for helping Skip through the years.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you so much. Well, you're over here, so I'd like to hold out over there. Grant Larry, of the City of Depot Bay, I'd like to present you with this plaque, for your term in office, and all the things that you've done, and all the work that you've done.
Thank you.
All right. Representative Gomburg and Commissioner Thompson, if you'd like to come up and do the oaths, I'd appreciate it. I was trying to get the representatives for each new council person, I'm juggling too, so you guys can only get two of these.
Well, let me say first of all, A.J., that I did not dress up special for you tonight. I want you to know that I left the house at five, I just wanted to go to Portland for a breakfast meeting, and talking about the economy with a large business group up there all day long, and I came straight back here tonight, so I'm not dressed up, I haven't had a chance to go undressed yet.
I appreciate you being here.
No, not at all, and I'm gonna slip away quickly, because Susan and I are flying out of Eugene at six o'clock tomorrow morning, and I'm not trying to get dissipity, I'm trying to explain to you how very important it was for me to be here for all of you, and it seems like a number of them slipped away already, but I also wanted to add my thanks to Councilwoman Goddard, Councilwoman Latt, and Councilwoman Barry, for their work, there she is, you're back over there, you've slipped away from the table already. Depot Bay is a passionate community, and it's not always easy to be a leader here, and so we all want to thank you again for your years of contributions and your service, and for trying to make this a better place.
Thank you.
So we have the oath of office, and I've read this over in advance, and there's something that struck me about the oath that we use here in Lincoln County, Terry, did you notice this? It says here, each of these people tonight is going to swear to demean themselves, to demean themselves, what does demean mean? Somebody tell me the definition of demean.
Come forth.
Well, that, you know.
It means to be the, to lower.
The common usage is it's to lower, it's to make fun of, it's to embarrass, but the older, the older definition is exactly what you said, to present yourself, to present yourself, to do honor, to do well, to do good, so let's use that context tonight, and I'll have you raise your right hand, please, and repeat after me, I, and then state your name.
I, A.J. Madelon.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States of America.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States of America.
And the Constitution of the State of Oregon.
And the Constitution of the State of Oregon.
And the laws thereof.
And the laws thereof.
And will faithfully and honorably.
And will faithfully and honorably.
Demean myself.
Demean myself.
In the office of Mayor, City of Depot Bay.
In the office of Mayor, City of Depot Bay.
To which I have been elected.
To which I have been elected.
To the best of my ability.
To the very best of my ability.
Congratulations.
I really think you've said it all, but I will honor that oath to the very best of my ability.
You too.
And let's see.
Where's Steve?
Steven, Steven, who do you please, come on.
I will.
Thank you so much.
Well, Steven, I will tell you that this will be the most challenging, the most demanding, and the most rewarding work that you've ever done.
I agree.
Are you ready?
I'm ready.
You said earlier tonight, is this where we get sworn at, and I said, no, you get sworn in tonight, you get sworn out later.
Okay, I'm ready.
Just raise your right hand, and I, in the state, your name.
Steven H. Sparks.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States of America.
I will support the Constitution of the United States of America.
And the Constitution of the State of Oregon.
And the Constitution of the State of Oregon.
And the laws thereof.
And the laws thereof.
And will faithfully and honorably.
And will faithfully and honorably.
Demean myself.
Demean myself.
In the office of Councilmember, position five.
In the office of Councilmember, position five.
City of Depot Bay.
City of Depot Bay.
To which I have been elected.
To which I have been elected.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Do you want to say a few words?
Well, I am humbled by going into that, I mean, this is a big deal, it's a pivotal thing in my life, I've never served in an elected office before, but I take it very, very seriously, believe me, and I'm very appreciative of the town and the support I've received over the years, the ten years we've been here, and I'm really looking forward to making a difference in this city and in a greater area, thank you.
Okay, let's see, Jerry.
Next one.
Joe, would you like to come forward?
First, let me make a comment, I'm glad to be here, you know, I've been out of here since I was a little kid, and known everybody in Depot Bay, it's real close to me and my heart, but when you sent me one and said you invited me to the swearing-in ceremony, I read it about three times, because the one makes you can say swearing-at ceremony. I've been brought up in Depot Bay politics for a long time, so I really appreciate you inviting me to do this, so, Joe Fisher Brown.
Hi.
Are you ready for this?
It's ready as I can be, we're ten minutes.
This, or you can do it anyway, you want to hand it to your friend, picture, that's this picture, right here.
There you go.
Put it right there. I, Joe G. Fisher Brown.
I, Joe G. Fisher Brown.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States of America.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States of America.
And the Constitution of the State of Oregon.
And the Constitution of the State of Oregon.
And the laws therefore, and will faithfully and honorably demean myself now. And the laws therefore.
And the laws therefore.
And will faithfully and honorably.
And will faithfully and honorably demean myself.
In the office.
In the office.
Of Councilmember, position six.
Of Councilmember, position six.
City of Depot Bay.
City of Depot Bay.
To which I have been elected.
To which I have been elected.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Congratulations.
Thank you. I'll try and keep it very brief, thank you to everybody who supported me, who put me up to this, who voted for me, thanks to my father, Gene Fisher, for setting the example of what a real leader is about, and most especially, thank you to my sweetheart, Tony, wouldn't be here without you, babe.
Jerome.
I'm glad to do it, I really was, and I was there for a while, it's here. A.J.'s gonna get me out of here and force me over.
Right hand. I, Jerome Grant.
I, Jerome Grant.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution.
That I will support the Constitution.
Of the United States of America. And the Constitution of the State of Oregon.
And the Constitution of the State of Oregon.
And the laws thereof.
And the laws thereof.
And will faithfully and honorably demean myself.
And will faithfully and honorably demean myself.
In the office of Councilmember, position four.
In the office of Councilperson, position four.
City of Depot Bay.
City of Depot Bay.
To which I have been elected.
To which I have been elected.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Thank you. Who'd ever think that I'd be standing next to a, a urchandiver doing this in my life, huh? It's an honor.
Well, Terry, and Dave, Dave, you look great, you lost a little weight, no, no, Terry, I swear, you're just getting younger.
Thank you for electing me, and I will also affirm along with what I just swore, is that
when it comes to representing the community, I will also set aside my personal interest and favor the interests of the community, to the best of my ability, thank you very much.
Mayor, if, now, everyone that just got sworn in, will we just sign their oath?
Will they just sign these now?
Yes, because Terry and everyone is also signing, and while you're doing that, I'll set up some moving.
Go.
I got the sign, it's all the way down.
Jerry?
I thought I did that right. Now.
Over here, three, there.
I got another pair of this here, sort of, I've had a lot of trouble.
Steve, would you come up, please?
Okay.
There you are.
I started fishing here. Fifty-four, fifty-three.
They make copies of these, but you will get the original.
Okay. Captain, you don't, we're working the board out. It's not real. Don't smile, we're all in, we're in office now.
And one more, Joe, where are you? Oh, there you are. Sign that one, please. Thank you so much. Please, we have to make copies of these, but everybody will get the original. Okay. hear people swear, if you will, that they're gonna put their light or their time on the line, and do thanks to the city that they love, and it breaks me up, I tell you, it's all I can do to maintain my support here, so thank you all for joining us in this endeavor. All right, on to the new roll call.
Fisher Brown.
Here.
Sparks.
Here.
Wyatt.
Here.
Olson.
Here.
Mathelah.
Here.
Gambino.
Here.
Grant.
Here.
Want to accounts available, Robert?
I'd like to make motion that we, through the accounts table, ask the, Mr. Reed, I'd second that motion.
Me, seconded, call please.
Fisher Brown.
Yes.
Sparks.
Yes.
Wyatt.
Yes.
Olson.
Yes.
Mathelah.
Yes.
Gambino.
Yes.
Grant.
Aye.
What do we have for special orders?
We don't have anything scheduled for tonight for special orders.
How about reports of officers, boards, or standing committees at this time, are we taking that up to my time?
I consider a little something about Lincoln City, it's all the ways you told you. Well, I attended the last meeting, and everything's real good, all the numbers, as far as finances go, are in order, except that it was decided to up the amount of surplus, or contingency costs, by $10,000, what that will mean to Depot Bay is an increase of, we've heard of it, about $370 increase, our normal payment is right around $500, so this will make it $870, and we'll have plenty enough, hopefully, to make it through the remainder of the term. Other than that, they're still looking for ways to plant sustainable vegetation on the hill of the dump, and the baling, the waste baling building, that's no longer used for waste baling, is being used by Thompson Sanitary, and it needs a new roof, so they're gonna look into engineering and costing the new roof. That's about it.
Thank you, do we have anything else? All right, on to public comments, and now's the time, we have something to say about the new year, the new day, now's the time, so please, if you have anything, speak up. Okay, thank you, unfinished business?
We do have some unfinished business, but in order to keep tonight's meeting short, we were able to push it forward to the next agenda, so that'll be on January 20th meeting, just things like the Harbor Master Plan study, we do have someone that has applied to serve on that committee, so at the next meeting, hopefully, we can be here for interview, and I think there's the credit card surcharge issue, and the funding for N.K., so those were three of the unfinished business items that are, will be on the next agenda.
Okay, thank you, and on to new business, we have the election of our council president, do we have a force for that, or?
No. By motion, it would be a motion to elect someone, and then, in just a second.
We have a motion, please?
I'll make a motion to nominate Zeke Olson for council president.
Second. Motion is made and seconded, any discussion on that? Call please.
Sparks.
Yes.
Wyatt.
Yes.
Olson.
Yes.
Mathelah.
Yes.
Gambino.
Yes.
Grant.
Aye.
Fisher Brown.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Raza. Thank you. Okay, the next item is councilor's advisement, assignments, do you have a list of those handy, or?
Yes. It's a two-sided memo, and so the front just kind of informs a little bit about each of the organizations, the back side has the list that includes incumbents, but then there's some vacant spaces.
Okay, great, good.
The only other thing I might note, our representative to Oregon Coast Zone Management Council, has to be an elected official, Dorinda Goddard served in that capacity, Lauren Goddard was our alternate, the alternate does not need to be an elected official, I have had the opportunity to speak with Lauren, and he said if the council so wishes, he would be willing to continue as the alternate representative, I also believe that Councilor Gambino has indicated he'd be more than happy to continue as the Cascade West Area Commission on Transportation representative, other than that, I haven't really spoken to any of the incumbents.
So according to our people on the back, Cascade West Council of Governments, myself and Zeke Olson are already on it, I intend to stay in that capacity.
So am I, yes.
Okay, and then the Cascade West Commission on Transportation, Robert Gambino was in the representative position, we needed an alternate for the Cascade West Area Commission on Transportation, do we have someone that is interested in that position?
Speak up, guys. I just said speak.
As an alternate?
What's that?
As an alternate?
This would be the primary?
No.
No, this would be the alternate, excuse me. I think Kathy said she does.
She good?
Sure.
Okay, Kathy, Wyatt.
You're welcome.
On to Lincoln County Solid Waste Consortium, and that's the, on the Agate Beach closure, I don't really understand exactly how that's coming down, but it is being eliminated, who's the main person on that?
You mean the city's representative?
No. Well, anyway, in our realm here, do we have somebody to be interested in a city representative?
I'll take it.
Okay, Joe.
Joe Brown?
Sure.
Thank you, thank you so much.
We'll get you a pack of, it's not like pulling nails out or anything like that. It's nothing like? Not like pulling nails out or anything.
No.
It's pretty simple.
Okay.
And then on the advisory committee, the same, Solid Waste gets directly out, our super, Brady, and we need one other person, does that have to be staff, or?
It should be a councilperson as a, as an alternate.
Pardon me?
It should be a councilperson as a, as an alternate.
Okay, well, I'd be more than happy to fill that.
Okay, you have to, I was elected chairman of the board today for the SWAC, for Lincoln County Solid Waste, so we could do that, actually could run the meeting, you know, for an alternate, so it's, it's right.
I'll say in the big, the big ad.
Yeah, yeah.
It sure is.
So, I, we see somewhere that, or did we, O.C.A.M.A., or was that managed?
Yes.
The Oregon Coast Zone Management, is that doing your, your?
So we could do that, actually could run the meeting, you know, for an alternate. It's right.
I'll say in the big, the big app?
Yeah, yeah.
Mayor? So, I, we see it's over there, or did we? OCZMA or ZMA?
Yes, you heard it, M.
The Oregon Coast Zone Management? Is that doing your, would you like to be the representative?
I would.
You got the job.
Do we still need to do any offices then? Solid Waste Advisory Commission, we still need to do that?
Are you talking about the wastewater advisory committee?
No, Solid Waste District Advisory Commission.
It's the ready?
No, one of Brady's.
Oh, SWAC.
Yeah, back up to SWAC, I think he changes.
Oh, you can, okay.
All right, so we're down to Lincoln County Communications, intergovernmental council.
I would, I had interest in that, only in that, that's kinda what my career was for a long time. But who was the primary? And I was alternate. I wouldn't, when do they meet, David?
There is no set meeting date. Um, Wyatt? It's on an as-needed basis and, I'm sorry, not here. I don't even know when they must met. It's typically when there's work to be done, drafting materials relating to emergency communications.
I would want here to be primary on that. I'll be the secondary. I'll be your backup.
On the Lincoln County Communications, do you wanna be the primary? Do you wanna be the?
I'll be the backup here.
All right. On to the Audit Review Committee, two, nesting on both of those.
Hold on. Hold on, I'll take the Audit Review.
And you want the representative position?
There's actually two committee members on this, Dorinda Goddard wasn't there?
There are two. I'll give you a backup. There's two representatives, it looks like.
Well, it says, on the right, you can read right-hand side, it says none, so I don't really under, understand. Can you help us with that part?
Well, we don't have, it's not an alternate, it's two positions.
Well, I can serve, I can serve with Jerome on that.
Okay, so we'll put you, all right, okay.
I've been through a few of those in my life.
And on the Safety Committee, we need one person?
I'll do it.
Okay, I'm on the Safety Committee, so I'm with Kathy. I'm happy, okay? So it's Carla, myself, and Kathy.
Uh, wastewater advisory committee, and we need one other person, right over here.
I've been waiting for an exciting challenge.
Well, this, this is gonna be right up your alley.
New and exciting challenge.
All right, Steve, you're on it.
Okay.
And accounts payable, would you like to do that again?
Sure, I'll take the primary.
And we need a backup? On the?
Oh, Robert, I'll back you up on that. I'll, I'll back you up on that.
Yes. I missed who the alternate for OCSMA, OCZMA, Lauren's on there and we wanted to raise and.
Oh, he?
He, he had said, I just talked to him, yes.
I thought, didn't he, didn't he say he wanted to do that?
He said he would, if the council wanted.
All right, he's got the job.
Okay, all right, thank you.
And then the alternate on the Lincoln County Solid Waste is Robert, so was that the other one?
You know, Solid Waste Advisory is you as alternate and Solid, yeah, Solid Waste is me, consortium.
Yeah, okay. Much for that.
Good, thank you.
Cascade West Commission on Transportation, C W A C T. Can you help me with that, please?
That, as far as the representative, that's Robert.
Yeah, we just did that.
Oh, we just said that?
Right. And the new alternate is Kathy.
Okay, great. And then we have the same, Lincoln County. Okay. Okay. All right, so those are all covered. Now, on item C of new business, we were requesting business cards from all the councillors and I full-heartedly recommend that that be done because there'll be a lot of occasions where they should be recognized in their capacity, whatever job they're doing. So, somebody'd like to make a motion on that?
Mr. Mayor, I'll make the motion that each, every councillor, and including yourself as mayor, should have a business card designated with their title and their name and if they so wish it will. Second? Yes.
Any discussion on that matter?
Yes. It was so important to me, anytime you go to any of these meetings, new folks, you probably know this anyway, but frequently when people from Newport and Lincoln City and all that gather in a meeting to decide and discuss things, they exchange business cards. And it was important enough to me that I begged Hurry for a copy of the logo and I spent a great deal of time at home making my own and it looked, yes, very, except there's green stuff at the top. Because it was from Vista Print, so 995 shipping. I made it myself, so it's very important, thank you.
We're still discussing it?
Yes.
They come in lots of like 250 or 500 pound, they hurry?
Um, the, the basic order is 500 cards, $63, or you can double that amount for $79, 1,000 cards.
We need more than 500 cards. And it's more than.
So 500 bucks for each.
And then each person will check in with you to give you the contact information, correct?
Yep, we'll touch base with everybody, sure. If the motion passes.
That's a motion.
Thank you.
Any other discussion on that? Call please.
Wyatt?
Yes.
Olson?
Yes.
Mathelah?
Yes.
Gambino?
Yes.
Grant?
Aye.
Fisher Brown?
Yes.
Sparks?
Yes.
On item D, authorized travel expenses for January 15th of 2015, League of Oregon Cities' Training and Region One Meeting in Manzanita. I for one plan on attending. I understand that Steve Sparks would like to attend the meeting and the training and Robert will like the training. So we authorize those expenses, or you make a motion on that? Do you know how much?
Sixteen, sorry. Roughly six hundred and eighty-eight cents. And that's based on estimates for meals primarily, which includes lodging, there's no registration fees. Mileage, it's about 160 plus miles round trip from here to Manzanita. The 2015 IRS rate is 57 cents per mile, so I, I added a few more miles in there. So that would be, it's, it was a best for, for the mayor and councillor Sparks and Gambino to attend.
Now, this training is really pretty important. If there's anybody else that would like to go to that training, I strongly encourage you to do so.
When is it scheduled?
It's a Friday. What day of the week is it? Is it Friday, I believe?
Thursday.
Thursday.
Fifteenth, January fifteenth.
Nine thirty a.m. to four p.m. for the training. And then there's the Region One Meeting, which is, I think, five to six thirty.
I don't have that.
Well, Regional Meeting is at four thirty and that goes to, I believe, six thirty, Region One Meeting. And I'm saving the city, enough for you guys to know, because I'm not spending that, I'm coming back.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Quick question on the, does the city make reservations or do we make those on our own?
In this case, the reservations have been made.
Okay.
Because of the time factor. If we have lead time and if a councillor wants to make their own reservations, that's fine. We, normally we do that.
Thank you. So, oh, we'll find out soon enough.
Yes, absolutely.
Very soon, thank you. So has the motion been made to?
No, we need to make a motion.
Well, before, excuse me, sir, before we do that, I'd like to find out if anybody else would like to go to this training. Is anybody else interested or can make it?
I can make this one.
That would be the big thing, we can't make it, but.
Yeah.
Yeah, there's other.
I would like to get a forward report on the experience, what would, possibly the meeting following the.
Okay.
Yeah, and with any highlights that you can share with the rest of the council would be great.
To make that motion, then?
Well, I'll make the motion first to approve the expenditure.
Second, call please.
Olson?
Yes.
Mathelah?
Yes.
Gambino?
Yes.
Grant?
Aye.
Fisher Brown?
Yes.
Sparks?
Yes.
Wyatt?
Yes.
And a report, Steve, could you give a report on that training?
I'd be happy to. You bet.
That takes care of that end of it.
Yeah. Yeah, we, I'll, you know how much time I'll have and, you know, I could speak for hours, so you have to tell me how much time I have.
We have to call.
Well, when it glazes over in the audience, you know you.
When people start going to sleep, we're gonna stop.
Okay.
On the, okay, so that's all. On the March 30th, 31st, and April 1st, there's gonna be a meeting in Coos Bay and also on the 1st in Fort Wright, California concerning the salmon questions. And also the question on coal salmon. And I plan on attending both those meetings. So I thought I'd just bring that up, if we could approve that one rather. And then I, I don't have a clue what the cost is gonna be.
We have time, don't we?
I, I think.
We could actually do it next time with the actual.
We can gather the comments and bring it back to the council for office.
Well, see, you don't have to.
But that's the end of March and the first part of April.
Right.
We'll do that.
Okay. Thank you everybody on that. Now, on to correspondence, who do you have, Robert?
I have, I have five items of correspondence. Two are on the same subject. We all have received a copy of a letter from the Department of the Navy and it's, what this letter is, it's a notice of the availability of a supplement to their environmental impact study to their training grounds. And it also is a notice that they've opened a public comment period, which closes, I think, on February 2nd. Yes. There are public meetings, they're happening, they're having one in Newport on Wednesday, January 14th, at the Isaac Newton Navy School Commons. And these are public meetings, so you can go there and provide your comment. You can also provide your comments online, just remembering that the deadline to submit your comments is February 2nd. They say in their letter that the reason that they're doing a supplement to their environmental impact study is to address a couple of changes. And they identify in the cover of the letter, the changes include tracking exercise maritime patrol, extended echo ranging, I don't know if it's sonobuys or sonobuys. The type and number of sonobuys used during this activity would substantially change. The other bulleted item that they list is maritime security operations. New information is available on air emissions from inland water vessel movements associated with this ongoing activity. So that's the notice. You also should have a copy of an email from George York, OCZMA, provides more information. I believe she has attached a news article from the Oregonian. What I thought was interesting in the information she attached was talking about the change to the number of sonobuys. What the article says is the change, the, the number of buys will increase from 20 to 720.
I got that a little.
Yeah. And they use the word substantially change, so. So that's interesting and it provides everyone the opportunity to attend a meeting or, or go online and provide comment or at least look at what's going on. Second item of correspondence is an email to the mayor from Tony Castle Nick. And he's introducing himself, he says, in addition to producing for Lars, he runs a company called Whale's Head Studio. They build websites and generate the content to fill them. He's offering to help with, okay, one of my goals for 2015 is to make our services available to companies around the state. They wanna focus their efforts on shining a light on some of those companies would be perfect. And I'm focused.
I read that letter and tried to interpret what he's talking about. In my mind, I connected it to the silver all, fiber optics infrastructure, planning that we need to do here in the city as it relates to social media, website development, and a lot of other things that we're thinking about. So my suggestion would be to think in terms of having a small committee that is involved in the technology discussion, so that we can take advantage of some of these resources that are knocking on our door, so that we know what we're looking for and we know what we're doing. We have a robust fiber optic infrastructure right now, we have technology that's 21st century and all we have to do is learn how to use it. So my suggestion is that we learn. And that's really what that letter is suggesting, but it's difficult to go out and talk to somebody like that unless we do a needs assessment. So I'm suggesting that we do a needs assessment.
Now, to add to that, Steve, why don't you head up that committee and be in touch with these people, find out exactly what we need to know to go along with your proposal?
Well, I'd be happy to help, help get started, but I wouldn't wanna do that alone. I wouldn't wanna have some.
I would join you.
Would you join me?
Yeah, I think, actually, I'm thinking that maybe a workshop would be in order.
A workshop?
Actually, working workshops, so that we could sit down. There's other people that are gonna play into this, are gonna give us comment, will give us things we're not thinking.
Well, the staff, the staff is a very critical part of this needs assessment. They're the ones that are using the technology and then we have a whole global community need in terms of our own social media or economic development interests and, you know, this is a very big subject, but the, the good news is that we have the infrastructure now to be able to build on it. But it's gonna take a while to do a needs assessment. But it's gonna take a while to do a needs assessment. We might wind up with several phases when we see the plan and we start executing it. And of course, the city staff has to be involved in that part.
Might I, might I suggest then that we create a committee?
That, I, I think that would be appropriate.
We actually have a technology committee as it stands right now.
But it's directly involved in this.
Well, it's not exactly for this, but it's formed for this, for technology and using the, what we have to figure out how we're gonna use it.
And we should, we should create a sense of urgency about that.
Well, I must put that to work.
Hurry, last, we still have the technology committee alive and well. We have money in the budget for it, too.
I believe we do have funding.
Yes, we do. So, how about we push this, put it on the top of the agenda the next time, and we'll have a roundtable discussion? And we'll get some information from the different councillors. Everybody, I don't know if everybody had a chance to read that letter. Some people may have picked it up today. So, let's, let's put it on our agenda.
So.
I think that that's all right with you.
That's fine.
So, the next regular agenda?
The next regular agenda, let's have, let's just start it. Let's talk about it and start.
Well, the first task in all this is, is doing that needs assessment in the scope of work. So, once we do that, then we're gonna have a better idea of how we want to proceed.
Mm-hmm.
First step, the baby step.
All right, let's put it in motion.
Okay.
We have two more items of correspondence. Jenny Damaris, who is the emergency manager, working out of the Lincoln County Sheriff's Office, has sent a letter to our mayor inviting our mayor and council members to participate in an after-action review, which is scheduled for February third, of a small community's response to a chemical explosion, requiring them to activate all parts of their emergency operations plan. Two weeks after that, they have scheduled a, a training session. And this is all through Lincoln County Emergency Management. So, hopefully, you can take a few moments, read through this. It's an invitation to participate in, in both that review action as well as a training. Like I say, take, take a little bit of time. If you're interested, we'll get you to sign up. Just letting you know. And the last item of correspondence is from Lincoln County Board of Commissioners. They are announcing that the Emergency Preparations Matching Grant Program for this year is open. This is a dollar-for-dollar match. And the most you can ask for, for a project is twenty-five hundred dollars. In other words, the, the most you could, the biggest project you could have matching, dollar-for-dollar, would be a five thousand dollar project. Deadline to submit, February twenty-seventh. The grant opportunity opened on January first, and they do say, first come, first served. Now, Brady and I talked about this. We have benefited from this grant program in the past. We've had various projects. We, we were able to enhance our communications trailer. We bought the flashing lights to identify a landing site. There, I can't, there's other projects.
Yeah, we have Brady the radio. We've got benches and stuff. Worked with Michael Hayne to get all the radios needed to communicate safe home and proper authorities around events.
And we, we purchased things like foodstuffs, emergency buckets with the, the last-grilled chocolate and all.
No chocolate.
And also water purification systems that, that would make enough water for, not the whole town, but, you know, they're, they're not big systems, but enough to, to make water. So, we have benefit, benefited through this. Brady and I talked and touched on this. At this point in time, we couldn't come up with anything to apply for. But we want, I know, but, but we wanted to present, this needed to be presented to you. So, if you have any thoughts on what we could apply for, we'd ask that we schedule this for the next agenda and, and discuss it, what we could apply for. And, and Steve?
I have a suggestion. Since we're gonna have to spend a little money on this technology needs assessment, why don't we try to get that money in the bank here to help us with that?
Generally, most of these funds are dedicated for emergency projects.
Yeah, well, there's an emergency component connected with anything that we do with technology. Anything we do with technology, you're gonna have to have an emergency component, component connected with it. Did we not consider something like that for that grant?
We, we can, we can ask. And because on the attachment to the announcement, it identifies items that could be purchased with this grant. Foodstuffs, water purification equipment, bedding, cots, sanitation, first aid supplies, warning radios, or other devices, and similar supplies or equipment. So, certainly, we can.
They got it, they got a telecommunications implication in there, so I would try, I would try to get the mic for our technology assessment, because there's gonna be an emergency aspect to that.
So, so, Mr. Do, do you want time to think about this, on the next agenda?
Yes.
Uh, one other thing, too, Brady. Update me on, on the emergency shut-off valves on our water tanks.
Yeah, just, they're, they're.
Do we have that ready?
They're automated at the water treatment plant. They're on a SCADA system. But they're manual at the tanks, and that would just take a, an employee to turn the valves off.
Could we use some of these funds to put in an automatic shut-off?
Automation, yeah. I mean, it would be really expensive. What we can do is possibly get price quotes from the automation group, which does a lot of our SCADA systems, and then we could, maybe, maybe get in a budget, but I don't think this is, this is a great idea at this time.
The SCADA programs that take care of all the equipment, that in itself is emergency planning stuff.
Yeah.
It is. And so, we just invested in the upgrade of the SCADA system. Can we use some of those funds to offset the expenditures?
Um, I, I.
Don't think so?
Maybe. Like I say, we can ask. This, this emergency grant program is really geared toward what I just read. It's not for infrastructure improvements. It's not for building improvements. It's really for equipment and, you know, like I said, bedding, foodstuffs, water purification. But any idea we come up with, we certainly will inquire and follow up.
The things that we're thinking about for this, this stuff like we did last year, work on the emergency trailer for radios. It's gonna be, the building that we're adding onto back here in the bus barn is gonna be for the emergency radio trailer. And a, a vehicle to attach to. It's got antennas and, you know, we're thinking about upgrade. We did quite a bit over the last two years. I thought I'd just maybe be a little frugal this year and take, take, kinda not have to spend much money this year, and then maybe do some more next year when the building's complete and the trailer's installed in there. And then we could kinda see what we need as far as cots and blankets and, you know, first aid stuff, things like that. I really don't know where I am until we get the new building installed and.
I, I think it's worth, the mayor, excuse me, that, no matter what, if the twenty-five hundred dollars is available, I mean, and to us, I would propose that we brainstorm on some, some little ideas. I mean, what's the harm, the harm in having more of some of the necessities, like meals, like blankets, like, you know?
Yeah.
And to serve the, the community. So, I think that we could come up with some, a plan to, to be able to, to apply for that grant. Number two, this is a little bit out of, for the city hall building here itself, do we have a backup generator?
Yes, and there's an automated switch.
Okay, great.
Yeah.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I just wanna reinforce with councillor Grant saying, my personal opinion is I need to leave money on the table. So, we should, anytime something like that comes in, I get all excited, because I'd like to figure out a way to make it happen instead of leaving it on the table.
That's correct. If we can appropriate those funds, let's do it, let's build a certain ladder.
We have, we have a lot of ideas. Michael and I, we talked about satellite phone. We talked about certain computer that would be user-friendly for him in, in the communications trailer. So, yeah, there's some ideas we could come up with, and maybe by the next meeting, we can come up with some ideas, if you guys want. You can do, absolutely.
Do you have the, does the city have the homeland security emergency phone?
Uh, we're, we're, it's in through the cell phones. It's.
Yeah, but it's, it's a cell that, I don't think it's a satellite cell, but it's a cell that.
Yeah, but it's into that, you know, it's now currently out. And that's actually no charge.
Thanks. Just, just aside, now, now, we can move on, but on the, the issue of the satellite phone, Global Star, I, I have a satellite phone. I use a Global Star as a service provider. And the initial cost of the satellite phone is relatively high, five hundred dollars. But the service that I get, now that they just, this last summer, put a new array and turned it all on in the sky, it's really quite amazing. And I get unlimited minutes on that satellite phone. You have to be live side, okay? Can't be inside a car. You have to be outside. But I get unlimited minutes for fifty-three dollars a month, including taxes, which is amazing. So, it's, it's costly.
Yeah. So, that, these, these are some of the ideas we came up with in the past that we, we wanted to use on these grants. We get, you know, sometimes they pop up every year about the same amount of money. So, we've been utilizing them as years go on. So, it's just something that we can maybe take some old ideas, or maybe come up with some new ideas for our first council, and I think we have to do it. So.
Let's do it that way. Let's do some thinking on it, get our ideas, and make sure we get the money.
Well, I'll do some research and talk to Jerome, and I'll talk.
Can you give us on our next council, uh, city staff report on that?
Sure. All right, yeah, you can. I'll have somebody come by next, next meeting.
That's all the correspondence.
No more correspondence? Brady, do you have any correspondence?
No.
Anybody else? All right. City staff report. What do we got, Brady?
I got quite a bit of stuff. So, we're accepting bids for the concrete work for the issue at the bus barn. I've gotta get a minimum of three contractors bidding on the concrete. You're gonna be footings, get a wall. And then, once that's completed, we can get into framing and get a framing contractor and so on. So, that's moving along. I've got an RFP out for the back trailer that was in the budget. It's a needed item for the crews. We put, we've had it on the table for the last few years. Most small municipalities have. And we see bigger cities like Lincoln City have a back truck, a whole truck. We would just be getting a trailer. And we budgeted about fifty thousand dollars in the budget for a while. So, I put an RFP in the paper to see if there's interest in, in what we could get for some offers. And then I'm gonna let some vendors know. There's about three companies in Oregon that, that sell or, or make these back trailers. There's Bitch Witch, and there's Own Equipment, and a few others. So, anyway, that's on the table. Maybe I'll have some decision and something to choose from by next meeting.
Well, that's subject, Brady.
Sure.
Okay. When we talked about first putting that auxiliary building back there, my comment was that make it larger, and it doesn't cost that much more. And I was thinking about a full three days larger. Is it too late to go that direction?
No, but we're doing, well, we finished the, the, right now, I left it so that, that connects box that the fire department has out there, it's kinda, I have to literally move it to do it now. I have to redo the plans. But we're, we're, we're doing the footings and the stables in eight inches, so we can always add on. If it was done six and a smaller footing, then that's only a single story. So, we, we are upgradable. And we can go, you know, at a later date, we can head, head to the east with it, you know, just put it another way.
So, are they compatible with what we're gonna build?
Yeah, what we have is in, in.
Okay.
But it is, it is made pretty strong. We're, we're using extra tie-downs and stuff for high mix, because this is one of the assembly areas for an emergency permanent quaybore.
Right.
So, we're trying to make it really strong building, especially out there, where they're wanting the city all to. Okay. And then, so I've got, speaking of tsunami stuff, we've got crews installing signs for assembly areas, which, you'll enter town, there's the tsunami guy. This is through Lincoln County. Emergency Jenny Damaris provided us signing, and she's installed. She notices by the public where assembly areas are. If the tourists don't know where to go, then they can, they can, you know, watch the signs, and there's arrows pointing to high ground. And so, we, we've had the signs kinda in the background for the last six months, and we really need to get them up. And so, the crew right now is working on that. So, I, next item, the Vista Forest Main, which is the sewer forest main that we're replacing, goes into the highway. I'll explain a little bit to the councillors is that the old forest main, it's pressurized sewer up to a thousand gallons a minute, is really old. It was put in in late fifties, early sixties, and it's really, really, you know, the, the, the titer yet has dropped off. It's, we're having to fix it. And if it breaks under the highway, and DEQ knows that that thing's in bad shape, that the city is really liable for a, a huge fine. So, we've been in the process of replacing that, getting engineering on board, and they're getting us design plans to, to run a new line up the highway and then tie it to the manhole in front of the wing wall, which is, once it gets to that manhole, it has fall. So, it's pressurized until there, and it'll have fall. So, the pump station is behind Pirate Coffee, so it's approximately eight hundred feet of, of pressurized line. So, what we're looking at now is the, the engineers are complete with, they, they did their preliminary plans. Their final plans are coming out this week. And I'm to meet with them Thursday. A civil, a civil west engineer.
I spoke with the proprietor of Pirate Coffee, and I also know this affects the property we do business on. And the proprietor asked that when the first job meeting comes up, that he be included, so he can get a scope of what's gonna happen as far as the cut and cover of our business.
Right, exactly.
Because it's not a board job now, it's a cut and cover.
Right. And I told the engineers to, absolutely, it's gonna be, and the RFP to notify the public and the business owners.
They'll, they'll work, they'll work with us, and there's no problem. They just wanna be kept in the loop as well.
Right.
But there's some permits, and there's, there's a lot of red tape out there. But we'll, actually, absolutely get, get it captured.
Yeah. Are we talking, when, when that happens, very hard, under the hot pot, Highway one-one?
Yeah.
A small portion.
So, will the tail shutting down part of the lane or two of one of them happen, or?
Uh, no, actually, we're gonna get to, not really, we're gonna stay inside the fog line till we get to that part by tire rates. We're gonna dig a fork for it and go under the highway without disturbing traffic.
Wow.
Yeah, so, it's, it's a pretty cool design.
There's a bunch of other stuff coming on, Jerome, and Steve is starting to get up to speed on this. But part, part of the deal is there's a sewer master plan in this town. And it also takes into account growth in this town. And Prettyness Forest Main also is gonna give us an option to divert waste away from downtown Corv, which runs right in front of some of the private restaurants here in this town. So, this helps a lot of people in what we're doing. It also helps Quinney Beach Water and Sewer District, too. They're part of the project.
So, not only for upgrading the line, too.
Yeah.
Could future demand.
Sure.
So.
It has to be done.
It's really cool, yeah.
We were actually having to, we had to shut Vista down on the twentieth. That was another part of the line. Well, what we had to do was, due to the high flows, we have heavy rains. The flows are over a thousand gallons a minute coming from Vista from, from, they, they, their flow is about ninety percent of what Vista takes. It's from the other district. because it's so far north, there's, there's Royal Mark, there's all air fluid, and then Royal Mark, a few, uh, areas, it is behind the bank, and then, and then there's, you know, that's where the pump station's located, it puts so much, uh, uh, pressure on those pumps that they, they were close to burning up, so we had to shut them off for about two hours, and bypassed in the ocean. I've done all the, uh, the bypass reports for DEQ, and we did not get fined, but we're, so far as long as you do what they want, and you fill out the proper forms, um, there's not, they just wanna be able to mitigate the problem, and know what we're gonna do, so we're actually working with Leaky Beach, or pump controls, maybe if they don't come on so hard, and there's maybe more of a soft start or something for the flows, um, there's different options. Yes.
That's the biggest part.
And fixing the INI, and the intrusion of water is really a big key, so we're working with them, and doing anything they can do on it, and no need to papers and stuff, so I just wanna make the council know that it's really, it's really gonna take the care of, and done properly. Okay, so, um, the final inspection is, uh, tomorrow for the fish plant building, a meeting with, uh, Dave Grant from Clearwater Engineering, we're gonna do, uh, a final walkthrough, and meet with, uh, Jeff Malvino, and, uh, he's gonna do a, uh, as built, and final inspection, and then, uh, there may be some other small things here and there, but, uh, that's gonna go closed. And then, uh, the other thing, I have the engineers, we're here today, and then with the mayor and myself, and these are concept engineers that are gonna design some of the docks and pilings for us to get us ideas of what we could do with dock two, three, and four. You know, one was replaced, you know, the tsunami and the moon, so, two, three, and four are really in dire need of replacement, and possibly piling, so they're gonna give us some concept design ideas, um, this is what they do, it's a harbor, um, coast harbor group engineers, um, so, anyway, that's about all I have for my report, so we'll move forward on, on the docks and pilings, as, as they gather information and get me, uh, reports and what's going on, and I can forward that to the council.
Mr. Mayor? Uh, the, uh, on the, so, uh, these, uh, this, this company, um, are they, is, is their business coming up with the ideas, or do they also contract the work?
They actually are just doing the, uh, concept engineering for the design, and then it would go, yeah, it would be a next step to do the-
Is it, are, are, are we paying them to, to do the workup for the design, or is that, is that program, program?
It, well, I asked, just for the design, they're gonna give us ideas, and then the council will decide what direction we wanna go.
So, they're coming up with the ideas for free?
No, no, we're, we're paying them.
Okay.
We're paying them for the design, that was all, yeah.
But they're coming up with the, these, uh, a number of designs, uh, based upon, uh, what the previous council decided, uh, they're to deal with.
Actually, it's gonna be on either side.
Yeah, that's, yeah.
Yeah, we have to reprocess.
And I have a copy of that for you, and we'll get, get through that senior pilot, make sure before tonight, I'll give you a, uh, a copy of the proposal.
You'll see in the proposal, it's broke out, that down the road, the next section will be costing and things like that, so it's all laid out.
It's broke, yeah, yeah, so we hired them and an RFP, they did a bid, and they, they, the council approved their price, and then they, they are just in the infant stages of, of what direction we wanna go, and see the harbor in, which is what the mayor and myself met today, we need to get input from the harbor commission, and, and we're trying to get a lot of folks' input on what direction we wanna go, the docks and pilings to, to be in the future.
They're gonna have some of these ideas, though, graphic board?
Um, I think, well, it's, I believe so, yeah, they're gonna, they're gonna have, uh, I, I think drawings, they're gonna have probably, uh, meetings with us, probably come in front of the council and do a proposal of what they came up with.
I'm, I'm sure it'll be comprehensive, so that was-
Yeah, we'll get you these reports, so you guys can all catch up on this stuff, this is very interesting.
This is really important, this is the big one.
I was really impressed with those people today, so.
Yeah, yeah, they, they, uh, they've got a lot to go, and they took, they gathered a lot of information today, and we're just gonna take it back to Edmond, Washington, and, uh, see what they come up with, but they're gonna communicate with us in emails and stuff, and if there's anything that, that the council, or, you know, they tell, talk to me, or whatever, I can let them know, give them information they wanna know just about everything, they took a lot of pictures, and talked to the mayor, and talked to some folks.
Yeah, well, we're just now getting started, so.
Right.
Reports we'll be forth with.
Something needs to be, uh, they, they realize how, what shape the pilings are in, and, and kinda-
We saw, we need copies of that picture, you know, the picture.
Right, yeah, absolutely.
Let's get it to the council.
Yeah, okay, well, that's it from our part.
Thank you, Brady?
Okay.
One more, over there.
Um, I just have a question, um, getting back to the Vista Force Main project, and the engineering firm, as Brady reported, they're, they're nearing completion of the design work, um, part of their contract was to come down and meet with, uh, Depot Bay and Leaky, and I, I wasn't, I think it might be the Waste Water Advisory Committee, so, and that hasn't happened yet, you know, through, through this part of the work, so do you wanna schedule that, do you wanna schedule it as a Waste Water Advisory Committee, or?
I thought we had already done that, but, you know, yes, let's get that-
Yeah, we should do that.
As possible.
You know, the other thing that I was thinking about on this, too, is, is that, uh, Mr. Baines, uh, Mr. Baines is the chairman of the Leaky Beach Water and Sewer District, and, uh, Mr. Baines, uh, some time ago, voted the new representative announced from our council, you know, and that's gonna be Mr. Sparks, and then he also, um, we queried him, he had requested a audit, an audit, excuse me, and has anything been done with that to him?
I-
Because they're gonna have to contact you, too, right?
Right.
Yeah.
Haven't heard anything.
Maybe we should put a bug in Brad's ear and tell him about that, and also about this proposed meeting with the Civil West people.
So, we can find out when the engineering firm could meet, and then kind of call everybody.
Yeah, if we, you know, the thing is, we need to, we need to set up a meeting with Leaky Beach sewers, because we promise-
It's fine for a quarter of a day, yes.
They were forward at the preliminary plans, and they got no problem on it.
Right.
So, we'll try to schedule a Waste Water Advisory Committee meeting before the end of June.
Try to shoot for Monday or Tuesday, like it is now, that way we keep our schedule.
You bet.
All right, we'll do, thank you.
Okay. Council comments, would you like to start over there with Phil Brown?
Would you like to know?
Just, any, any feeling, or just, just you'd like to work on?
Very happy to be here, feel myself in very, very good company, uh, just feel a little bit of a muddy head apple moment, but I'm sure it won't take long, now that I'm in with the in crowd, so to speak, to get caught up on things and figure out what everything means, and where stuff goes, and, so, I'm hoping that you guys are not gonna be too offended if I ask a lot of questions, and, as some people who are here present, which names will be not named, but, uh, these people are very aware of the fact that I am just full of opinions, so, don't be surprised if I stray in a few of your direction, and feel free to back them back at me.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, I have a couple of things I'd like to share with the, uh, city council and the citizens of Depot Bay. One thing that I did, uh, and it was suggested to me six months ago, when I started to, my, the process of running for city council, is that I would, uh, get around and visit with our citizenry, also with the city staff, and spent a lot of time with Brady and back visiting the structure, and talked to Perry, and, and I, I, I have had several hundred conversations over that period of time, even or not, several hundred conversations. And I wanted to just share the two things that came out of all those conversations, just two things. The first overriding theme from your community is that people are talking about how this council might do a better job, bridge building, peacemaking, fence mending, and learning how to work together as one team. I heard that over and over and over again, that's a big challenge, but I think we can do it, I have some ideas for doing it, I've talked to a lot of people about it, and I think the timing is just right, our community is very interested in that. And leading to the next one, once we, we work that issue, is virtually everyone that I talk to is concerned about the sustainability of Depot Bay, they worry whether or not the salmon bake is gonna be here next year, or whether we're gonna have the fleet of flowers, or whether the chamber is gonna be around, or, uh, you know, there, the, the community is not comfortable with wherever we're going in, in the context of a five-year, or ten-year plan. This is from, this is not me, I'm the messenger, so it's those two things, so, as a new Consular, it really helps me to listen to the citizens and to hear the overriding global kinds of things that they're talking about. And finally, uh, you know, my wife and I were talking this morning about champions, and we all need champions, and my wife Judy over there is my number one champion, I've been blessed to have a lot of champions, including many in this town, where I wouldn't be here right now if I didn't have, uh, my number one champion for sure, but others here. And what I hope for, and what I think about a lot going into this new role, is that the Depot Bay City Council can be better champions for all the citizens of Greater Depot Bay, and I'll do my best to make a difference. Thank you.
Debbie?
I'm excited for this new year with the new council, and anxious to learn, I have a lot to learn, like Joe, and so far, so good. I'm staying.
Big?
Yeah, I've got a couple comments, first, um, little story here, I got, this is just nothing, really something, I just went across that, I got these for you guys, there was a little tiny museum in this town, can I pass those down, I don't know where you're at? Little tiny ones for you, too, tiny museum in this town called the Olympic Museum, and most people have never heard of it, never seen it, it's on the north end of the strip, it's kind of in an out-of-the-way place, she's a delightful lady, but this little pin, uh, was done for them, but I thought it was really cool, because it has a bridge of Depot Bay, and it has a gray whale on it, and it's a little pale pin, so it says Depot Bay, so, you guys, I just thought maybe you should have those, it was kind of funny and funny.
That's really cool, thank you.
And, uh, I also leave some, thank you, you put up with a lot for two years, thanks, and, uh, to the rest of my Consulars and city, uh, uh, city denizens, I will do my utmost or my best to, uh, work hard for this community as I have for the last few years, and, uh, serve, uh, you, Zelikson, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Uh, the only thing I would, you know, I agree with all of that, over there, and, uh, it's kind of my show, the only thing I would add is that, um, I have kind of always been, in these two years, proud of what we have done, not proud of what we haven't done or need to do. Um, I'm frequently telling other Consulars and the mayor, uh, when I hear about problems and things we have to work out, I'm frequently saying, yeah, but remember what we did already, remember last month, remember some of the things we've accomplished, so, I'm hoping for another two years of the same kind of, or better, but, progress, which I believe we have done and will continue to.
Thank you, Jerome.
Um, I'm just, uh, I'm just taking it all in here, I'm in my, um, uh, informational gathering phase of, of being a Consular. Appreciate your, I think I'm one of the few politicians.
Yeah. Okay, I just have a real quick, thank you, Paul. Just a real quick comment, uh, the council has pretty much said it all, and so, the only thing I'm gonna add to it is, we do have a new day, let's make the best of it. We are eight thirty-five, and we are, you're-